Exit executive session.
I'll make the motion.
Second, and motion seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstain, motion carries, call for a motion to enter into public session.
Motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstain, motion carries, please rise for the saying of the flag.
To the flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Hey, welcome everyone, as our privilege once again to recognize our Falcons of the Month, so that we'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Thank you. President of the board said that it's our privilege, it's actually the most fun that we have to welcome, right, when the students come to our meetings, it's, it's, it's a lot of fun, so we're so happy that you're here tonight. Tonight, we have the distinction of honoring our next group of Falcons of the Month. Each school in our district celebrates numerous students each and every month for simply being outstanding. We've asked their schools to select one individual from many honored to represent the group. Therefore, the students we will be honoring tonight were selected because they personified the trait or characteristic we've celebrated this month. In other words, these students represent the best of the best for this month. What will happen, I'm going to read the certificate here, that talks a little bit about the Falcon of the Month, and then we're going to, I'm going to ask each Falcon, I'm going to call you up by name, I'm going to ask, they come up here, you're going to shake my hand, I'm going to give you your certificate, then you're going to walk along, and you're going to shake the hand of everybody who's at the table, and, and, um, so that they can congratulate you as well, okay? So here's what it says. The certificate of recognition, whereas the philosophy of the education of the Niagara field central school district calls for aiding all students in the development and achievement of their potential. And whereas the primary goals of the school district include encouraging each student to develop a sense of values, instill a feeling of responsibility to self and to others, as well as an appreciation of good citizenship. Being resolved that the Board of Education of the Niagara field central school district hereby recognizes the following students. First student tonight, who we'd like to recognize as a Falcon of the Month, is Avery Antonelli, Avery. Next, we have Nicole Songino. And next, we have Autumn Rodriguez. Next, we have Brendan Valent. Up next, Maya Leading Fox. Next, we have Jason McCain. Next, we have Thomas World. So before we move out of our recognition phase, there's two, two other types of recognitions we want to give tonight. One has to do with a staff member who was a former teacher, turned administrator. Mrs. O'Brien. Mrs. O'Brien, if you know, is the principal at Eric Road Elementary School. She started her district as, in, in our district as an English teacher in nineteen ninety-nine. I wouldn't, you know, count that, right, nineteen ninety-nine. She was a teacher as an, she was an English teacher for five years. She, in her last year, she worked as a teacher on special assignment administrative internship position in the district. She then became assistant principal at Eric Road, and then was principal at Eric Road. For the last twenty-one years, she had been in a leadership role at Eric Road Elementary School. She's done incredible work for our district for incredibly long time, is now moving on to, uh, to an assistant superintendent position, we're going to miss her, we wish her absolutely all the best. She's going to do a great job there, she's done a great job, so congratulations.
I just wanted to thank the board, you know, when I think that I started working here in the nineteen hundreds, I sometimes like to think that I, I grew up in the nineteen hundreds, but different century. Um, I know I've been here a long time, but, you know, this community, this board, um, the very first superintendent that I worked for, supported me, believed in me, and tapped me, um, and if it weren't for the board at that time, my principal, Dr. Howard, I don't know if I would have emerged as the leader that I am today. Um, and I'm just so grateful for that opportunity, we had some really great years. We had some really tough dark times, um, and I stayed throughout it, throughout it, because I believed in the district, and the district believed in me. Um, you know, some people might be embarrassed that we were once a fiscally stressed district. Um, I speak of that with pride. I'm really proud of what we've become. Um, I think that those tough times have made us stronger as a district, I know it's brought me together with my staff. Um, and we have an incredible, strong building that I'm so proud of, and it's so great in every way possible. I know it's going to do great things and continue to do great things even when I leave. Um, because the people there are so special, um, the relationships we've built are just second to none. Um, and, you know, we've seen each other through marriages, raising kids, loss. Um, it's, it's truly a second family, I think I spent more time in school, I just sleep, than I do at home. And this is a part of me, this community is a part of me. Um, so, I'm so grateful to have this experience, um, and I think from the bottom of my heart.
And our last two recognitions tonight are actually from NISBA, NISBA's New York State School Boards Association. They've prepared, excuse me, a certificate. Um, and the first certificate says Board Mastery Award, and that is to Robert McDermott. It says through NISBA's Board of Excellence Recognition Program, conferring more than twenty, two hundred and fifty points for your ongoing association professional development and/or accepting additional leadership roles, so. They put one complimentary certificate, put one complimentary training session on there, so they can get more hours. The, the next Board of Achievement Award is for Jason Myers, our board president. It says through NISBA's Board of Excellence Recognition Program, conferring more than seventy-five points for your ongoing association professional development and accepting additional leadership roles.
All right, congratulations once again to our Falcons of the Month. Mr. DiMaggio, I have to say, uh, AP English teacher, in twelfth grade. Um, Mrs. O'Brien, and we wish you the best, and you persist in the district, well, certainly missing.
Yeah, no, I just want to, uh, to Jason and, you know, there's a lot of time we all spent doing this, but they've gone above and beyond doing other things with bowl season and everything else, so we thank you for all that, and what you've bring to the board. Nora, I've known you for thirteen years now, and it's been a pleasure working with you. Uh, you're building with yourself and all your staff. For the thirteen years that I've been here, and I'm sure beyond, you've done a great job. Um, I wish you all the luck in the future, and, uh, good luck.
With that, uh, we'll take a fifteen minute, uh, break here, please help yourself to refreshments. Rest once again to everyone, thank you.
Back to order, continue on with the privilege of the floor, letting residents comments when they sign up. You'd like to speak? Okay.
I have five students within the district and five different schools. I prepare this. So, good evening, members of the Board of Education, administrators, educators, parents, the community representatives. I come before you not only as a concerned parent, but as a steadfast advocate for our children's rights and their future. Let me begin with a story. Imagine eleven and twelve-year-old girls full of youthful enthusiasm chatting with friends, only to have their playful remarks and banter mischaracterized and reported as defamation. This isn't an exaggerated word. It is a real scenario unfolding in our district today. In my commitment to exposing this concerning issue, I shared my story in genuine concern on my social media. Instead of fostering open dialogue and constructive change, the administration questioned my actions going so far to suggest that I was committing defamation simply by sharing my experience. This response was not only disheartening, but also highlighted a disturbing double standard. While our code of conduct misuses legal language to harshly penalize children, my attempt to advocate for fairness was met with insinuation of defamation. Under New York education law, every student is entitled to a fair, transparent, and lawful disciplinary process. Yet our student handbook falls short of these vital standards. Labeling an innocent playful comment as defamation is both factually inaccurate and legally indefensible. Consider this: applying legal terms meant for severe adult offenses to a child's comment is akin to using a sledgehammer to crack an egg, excessive damaging, and entirely disproportionate. Ask yourself, should our children, even their advocates, be penalized for expressing genuine concern and highlighting injustice? Let us examine where our policies falter. There is lack of due process as the handbooks neglect to clearly articulate that students and their families deserve timely, complete notice of disciplinary charges, a fair hearing, and a meaningful appeals process. This omission violates legal standards and risks infringing on the rights of our children. There is misapplied legal terminology when everyday youthful behavior is labeled with terms like defamation, and an innocent misstep is transformed into a criminal marker. Should a child's harmless remark and parent's truthful account of their concern carry consequences designed for malicious actions? There is policy inconsistencies. Although our district's website publishes additional documents, the code of conduct and the board policy manual, these do not align with the handbooks on which parents, students, and teachers rely. This disconnect breeds confusion and erodes community trust. What I urge this board to do is take decisive and corrective action. We must commit to a clear and justice framework that truly protects our students. We need to establish a clear and age-appropriate code of conduct with straightforward and accessible rules free from unnecessary legal jargon that can overwhelm our children. We need protections for full due process and alignment across all policies, handbooks, and codes of conduct. So that it mirrors the stronger, well-defined policies that are on the website. When policies are ambiguous and legally unsound, it is our children, and even those who advocate for them who bear the costs. The law demands clarity and fairness. Isn't it our duty to properly ensure that every policy guide that every policy guides rather than confuses? In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically." Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. Are we equipping our children with a handbook that fosters growth, or are we subjecting them and our voices to punitive scrutiny? In standing up for clear lawful policies, we are not merely upholding legal standards. We are safeguarding the future of every child in our district. Just as a lighthouse steadfastly guides a ship through stormy waters, our handbook must illuminate safe path to justice, opportunity, and growth. I ask each of you, will this board allow confusing and punitive policies to persist, or will it step forward boldly to champion fairness, transparency, and the rights of our children and those who seek to protect them? Thank you.
Good, thank you. Moving on to our consensus agenda items, I'll call for a motion to accept those items one through six as presented. And moving second, all those in favor, please say aye. We'll move on to personal items. We're going to separate number five. I'll call for a motion to accept personal items one through four and six through twenty-five as presented. So move.
Second.
And moving second, all those in favor, please say aye. Post, stand, motion carries. Move on to personal number five. Could I turn over Mr. Stack?
Oh, thank you to our Board of Education. It's my honor and privilege to introduce to you Eric Scalise. Eric is joining us tonight and asking for board support here this evening for an appointment to a French teacher position here at our high school and in our district in the Loeb Department. A little bit about Eric. He is a multilingual and French and Spanish. He also is a Grand Island native. He attended Hofstra University and the University of Buffalo, is completing his programming now. He's a, I found out, the umpire chairman for the Grand Island Little League. And we asked him, you know, if he was to get the job here, to please give us some good calls during the tournament this year. So we're hoping that that works out. He's done that for twelve years, so he's obviously very committed to students and involved in extracurriculars. He also just wanted to make sure that you know how grateful he is to be part of the Niagara We Field community. He's joined here this evening by his girlfriend Elena, as well as his parents. And we are very thrilled to introduce Eric to you this evening. We asked for the board's support to appoint him to the French position at the high school.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll call for a motion for personal item number five, appointing Eric Scalise. Motion second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Thanks, Tom. Moving on to our standing committees, update from the Kepel Projects Committee.
I imagine you can see our auditorium is going pretty well out there. We're starting to get some definitely definition on what it looks like. But on June fourth, five o'clock, we're going to have a Kepel Projects meeting. We'll be reviewing and really seeing up close what that changes are and how it's moving along.
Thank you. Also have items from the Policy Committee, the second reading and adoption of policies, twelve, ten board members' nominations and elections, and policy thirty-three, eleven, notification of disclosure of employee disciplinary records. Does need to be voted on individually, or can we do? Okay, with that, I'll call for a motion to adopt policies twenty-ten and thirty-three, eleven as presented.
I'll second.
And move in second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Post, stand, motion carries. There are no external written communications. We'll move to the executive student members report.
First and foremost, I just want to say congratulations to the Falcons month, as well as the all the student athletes that signed their way today to all their college sports. It's a big thing for a lot of people. I mean, it's very impressive and it's it's very exciting for all of them to move on to next level. So regarding the bathrooms, this has been an issue and something prominent throughout the entire year. More have been opening, but also I'd say more so the frequency in which they open and close has been increasing as well. You know, one day a bathroom will be open, next it'll be closed. Sometimes it differs between periods of the day. So that's something that a lot of students are mentioning. So I think, I mean, I'm not sure the context behind it, but I just wanted that to be called to your attention. Whether it's intentional or it's something that's just a happenstance, just wanted to call it to retention. But other than that, it's pretty decently quiet. I mean, it's the year of wrapping up everybody sort of, you know, getting ready for exams, getting ready for the finals, sports games and everything. As well as, I'll relate it, the April twenty-sixth Eco Campus reorganization project, it went very well. As, at least from my perspective. Lot of cleaning, lot of weeding, but everyone was, you know, there were a lot of laughs shared. Everyone seemed to be having a great time as well as, you know, just improving the overall look of the campus and the future of it. So this is very exciting. It was a lot of fun, so. Yes, that's all right.
Thank you very much, Jonah. I don't have anything additional from President's Report and then to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. First, I want to thank our cleaning crew here at the school and laborers. The, this room that we're all sitting in tonight, a few hours ago, was set up for AP exams. And tomorrow morning, it'll be set up for AP exams again. Okay, so, you know, the work they do to take this down, put it back up, take it back down, especially when it comes to examination time is incredible. And that's a lot of work, and so I really want to make sure that we thank them for that work. I'll jump ahead because Jonah, thank you for mentioning the weekend. Jonah was there. Jonah was doing a lot of work. There was a lot of sweat put into that, even though it was cold, a little cold, a little rainy, a little. But it was a perfect day. We actually had the second most people there volunteering that we've had, and then this is like the fourteenth biannual event. So we had approximately sixty people there. Some were walking, cleaning the campus. Others were working on the hugo culture areas. It was, it was a pretty impressive group, and they did a lot of work, and it was awesome. We also had the wellness walk. There were, there was well over a hundred people. Part of that, there were only fifty signed up the night before, and they ended up more than doubling the number of people that were part of that. And the wellness fair, there were thirty-two, thirty-two vendors this year, which is the most that we've had. Number of those vendors were, their focus was on health wellness. So it was a really great thing. There was some yoga taking place. There was some, I was going to say, Coach Colter was there doing some flag football outside. And then it's, some of those players were doing flag football, right? Then they went into yoga. Did he do the yoga? But there was a, there was a good group going and doing yoga. It was a really, it was a really great bill. For everyone, we had a good turnout. Either the weather really didn't keep people away, so. Jonah, thanks for bringing it up. The next year's reorganization meeting, we talked about scheduling that for July second. That would be the first Wednesday, Wednesday in July. If everybody's good, good with that, we'll get that on a calendar. So maybe take a, take a quick look. And while you're looking at that date, last year, we were, it was really tight. We actually got to flip calendars out to the community a little bit later than we normally do. It's, everybody kind of gets in there and you end up in the backlog. One of the things that holds us back is if we don't make a decision about our Board of Education meetings for next year until that reorganization meeting. So what we're recommending we do, if everybody's good with this, at the next meeting, I would bring a draft of what those meeting dates would look like for next year. Make any revisions to it. Then what we'll do is on the flip calendar, we'll put a little QR code. So that it'll say, here are the dates, but if there's any changes, they can always, you know, click on the QR code for the most up-to-date. That way, we'll be able to get that out to the, to the, you know, to the press to get those done and then back to us in time. But still have an opportunity if the board that is seated post July one decides to make any adjustments to that, they could. I don't know if that sounds to everybody, but it could work for us. Yeah, well, I'll bring a draft of what that could look like for the next meeting.
Sure. Do we need to vote on the date of the reord? Not yet.
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, no, we all need, like, on a new business that actually, I have to say that that'll be our first meeting in July.
We don't need to do that, so.
No, not at all. No. The knows-but dinner, I know, is coming up. That's tomorrow night, May eighth. I know Jason's going. I didn't know if any other board members. Bob's going. I will not be able to attend. I'm going to be on, on my way back from Commissioners Advisory Council meeting, and then there, we actually have a parent group meeting, budget meeting with the West Street Parent Group. And then the last item on May fifteenth, we'll be able to honor our top three students at the Scholastic Recognition Dinner, which is, you know, a really nice event that's put on every year by the Niagara School Superintendents Group. So we're excited about that. That's all I have.
Thank you for your report. We'll move on now to reports to the Board of Finance Budget Hearing.
Thanks, everyone. I promise this is the last budget presentation that we'll get this year, okay? Which is really great for everybody that's in the room, I'm sure, especially those who've heard it many times. This is the official budget hearing, though, so we won't, we're going to go through each slide out here. Some of the information here is critical to be, to be shared as far as we're concerned at the official budget here, okay? The only legislative priority that we've left on, and we've talked about this every night, that we've had a board meeting now for the last three months, I guess. Zero emission buses, it's, it's an issue. It's an issue because the funding doesn't match the need for and the cost of the buses. It's also an issue because the infrastructure still isn't ready for the buses. Remember, the expectation is that we begin buying days in twenty-twenty-seven, and that you, all of your buses have to be turned over by twenty-thirty-five. The cost of the buses is still about three times the cost of a, of a current bus, you know, that we, that we purchased. We know from the survey that there, we just got some information today, but a survey that we have being completed by Wendell and NIBA. It, that fourteen of our current bus runs couldn't run with electric buses. In other words, if you think about this, fourteen of our runs where our secondaries or middle school and high school students are picked up in the morning, they get on the bus, they get dropped off at school, then those same buses go out and pick up our elementary and bring them back to elementary schools. That run is too lengthy for fourteen of our current runs. That run is too lengthy for fourteen of our current runs. So you'd either have to get kids onto a different bus or find another way to, to structure the runs. Well, remember, we're trying to get as many people onto a bus as possible because we only have so many drivers. So if we had to have more buses, we'd have to have more drivers, which is of course an issue, not just for us, but throughout the nation, state, certainly our region.
So on January twenty first, Governor Polk did present her proposal for the state budget. She proposed a total of thirty seven thousand three hundred sixty five point four two million or thirty seven billion three hundred sixty five thousand four hundred twenty million in state support for public schools. And of that, that amount, a portion of it is made up of formula based aids and a portion of it is categorical aids and grant programs similar to prior years. Her budget increase was a four point seven five percent increase over the prior school year and all all the expense driven aid formulas are going to continue. We still at this point do not have a legislative approved budget yet. So our budget numbers reflect the executive budget proposal.
And some of you may have seen, you know, some of the bills are going through, right? So the good news, the two eleven waiver, we only use that for one particular position right now. But that is the waiver that allows retirees to come back and work when you can't find somebody to fill those slots. That looks like that's gone through, it's gone through, that bill's gone through. So that's a true year extension on that two eleven waiver, which is good for a lot of districts in New York State.
This is just showing our aid, our executive budget aid versus prior year. And in the first line, you'll see the increase in foundation aid is just over two point two million or eight point nine eight percent. Our expense based aids include building aid, transportation aid, BOSI's aid. Those are all paid to get the aid, pay upfront to get the aid in the following year. So based on our capital projects, our, our transportation aid is bus purchases and BOSI's aid, our purchases we make through the local BOSI's programs. Public high costs, excess cost aid and private excess cost aids are directly related to special education programs. And those are for students that are educated outside of our district in private programs. We get aided above a certain amount. Once we spend a certain amount, we get aided on that amount. And below that, you'll see instructional material aids, software, hardware and technology. Textbook and library materials aid, those are aids directly related to enrollment, student enrollment. So you can see they've dropped a little from prior year. That's probably due to a slight enrollment difference. We don't receive any other aid. So our total aid this year is just over forty one million, forty one million four hundred sixty nine thousand five hundred sixty nine dollars, which is a change of just over two point nine million or seven point six one percent.
And just important to point out about that foundation aid number. That jump is a direct result of the state using twenty twenty census data and also using data that includes the changes in our district, right? So over the last ten years, our rate in our district has gone up by ten percent. So that's now reflected in those numbers. As a matter of fact, if you know that the last ten years it's gone up, that census is from twenty twenty. So the last five years, we've also seen, you know, an increase of, you know, an average of one percent a year.
This just goes through the tax cap levy worksheet that I do every year. It starts out with the prior year levy and multiplies it by tax based growth factor, which is provided by New York State. We add in the current year pilots and subtract out any capital expenditures net of aid. Multiply that by an allowable growth levy growth factor. Again, that's provided by New York State. And subtract out any receivables, pilot receivables and add in any carryovers. So our levy limit before exclusions is thirty six million eight hundred sixty thousand thirty four dollars. We have exclusions every year because we do do capital project work. So our exclusions this year were just over six hundred thousand, six hundred forty six thousand, six hundred sixty seven dollars. Making our levy limit plus exclusions thirty seven million five hundred six thousand seven hundred one dollars or point six four percent over prior year. And that difference is two hundred and forty thousand one hundred forty seven dollars. And the board did approve to go to the levy limit this year. So we'll be adding that two hundred and forty thousand one hundred forty seven dollars to our levy.
And I just want to stress that that's zero point six four percent. That's not six point four, that's now sixty four, zero point six four percent. Okay, so it's less than a percentage point.
So this is showing the employee retirement system, right? This is the employer rate that we pay on salaries for all non-teaching staff. This year it's gone up to sixteen point five percent and you can see how it varies year to year, but this year it's gone up slightly. And the next slide, this shows the teacher retirement system rate. Again, these are the rates that the employers pay on the salaries of teachers and administration. And it's gone down slightly, nine point five nine percent. But again, this is the largest dollar amount. Teaching salaries are the biggest part of our budget. So although the rate's gone down, we're probably, we're not budgeting less, we're budgeting more because salaries go up year to year.
Here you can take a look at the levies from two thousand seventeen to two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen to twenty four, twenty five. You can see that it was zero point six eight percent in seventeen eighteen, two point four nine. I'm not going to read all the numbers to you, but you can see the numbers as you go through. The twenty four, twenty five number was two point nine nine percent. The eight year average is one point nine four percent. When you add in what the board is proposing, which is the zero point six four percent. The nine year average becomes one point eight zero percent per year for nine years. Over those nine years, that's the average.
This is just showing the budgeted revenues. Again, the real property taxes, thirty seven million five hundred six thousand seven hundred dollars. And then below that are pilots or payment in lieu of tax collections and interest and penalty on property taxes. And then below that is some continuing education monies, tuition from other districts, health services from and other tuitions. We receive Native American tuition. That's tuition we receive for students that are residing on the Tuscoror Nation for middle and high school students. Because we can't collect property taxes, so we get some aid from New York State for that. Any interest in earnings we will earn on our, our balances, our bank balances throughout the year. And then we do have some rental of real property and sales scrap. And then below that are some other smaller BOSI refunds. And that's again for services that we didn't use in the prior year that were refunded for gifts and donations and some other unclassified small transportation charges. Up on the right hand side, you'll see that's our state aid. So our foundation aid, building aid, public, private costs, excess cost aid. You'll notice the foundation aid and the textbook software, hardware, library material aids are a little different than the previous slides and that's because the, this budget is for the general fund budget and those aids are based on student counts. So because we have students that we get paid for through the Tuscorora School, those aids go back to that school budget. So they're reduced in total input to that budget. That's the, the state supported school. We also receive impact aid from the federal government. For, again, that's for Native American students living on Native American land. And some Medicaid revenues. And then below that, you'll see some of the amounts that we use to balance the budget. And we'll go into that a little further in some of the slides coming up. But interfund transfers, appropriated fund balance and then the reserves to balance out. So our total expenditure budget this year is ninety one million ninety nine thousand six hundred ninety seven dollars or four point six three percent over prior year.
Allison mentioned that the impact aid, you can see that that number is about a million dollars. The seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, excuse me. That money along with the federal funds that we receive for students with disabilities is something that obviously everybody's been worried about, concerned about because those are federal dollars. Everything we've heard to this point is that those federal funds are going to be moved to another department to be disseminated. We haven't heard anything different. If and when we do, if that does happen, we will let everybody know, but that's what's been said. We're going to assume that's the case. Okay? And then, and then here, when you look, it's just important to know, when you look at that bottom number, that grand total, that ninety one million dollars. Understand that, and then you look at the four point six three percent increase. You can reduce from that four point six three percent increase, the funds that are coming in to just pay for things that we need. So if you look at the interfund transfers of eight hundred thousand dollars. The capital transportation reserve, the capital technology reserve, they're all highlighted in green. Those dollar amounts are all being taken from reserves, okay, to pay directly for interfund transfers for debt and the capital transportation reserve technology for those two, for those two areas, okay? So, you know, that's a significant, significant part of what looks like the revenue increase, but that's paying for something right away.
So the total expenditure budget again is just over ninety one million and our actual revenues that we expect to receive in is just over eighty four million, leaving a balance of just about six point three million dollars. And how we'll fund it is through the following. And again, this was just touched on. So the transportation reserve and technology reserve are monies that are using the offset, directly offset expenditures in the expenditure budget. So nine hundred forty six thousand dollars will be used to purchase buses and facilities vehicles. The technology reserve, two hundred thousand dollars will be used to purchase student devices. And the interfund transfer is actually host community Greenway money that we've had from a project that was done back in two thousand eleven. That's still paying off the debt, so we're applying that to that debt, leaving a balance of just over four point three million to fund. And that balance will be funded using the following reserves. So workers' comp reserve, we're going to put five hundred thousand dollars toward that. Employee benefits reserve, four hundred fifty thousand, the ERS and TRS reserves, each seven hundred fifty thousand. And then the balance would be funded through the appropriated fund balance at just over one point nine million.
The first nation, what's about this slide here is that you see some reserves that have the same names on it. If you go across this top, you see workers' comp, ERS, TRS. Other employee benefits, tax cert and unemployment insurance, okay? All of those reserves are restricted and can only be used for those categories. If you look underneath that, you see capital transportation, capital transportation. There's two of those. Why do you have two? Because when we, as a district, establish a reserve and set an amount, a limit, like you can see the first one, it says up to three MM, up to three million dollars. That, you can only put three million dollars in there. Once you put three million dollars in, you can't put anymore in. So once you start to draw down on that to buy buses. Now you're below three million. You can see that we're at two point four. You can't put more money back in there. You have to create a new capital transportation of reserve. So that's why we have the second one. Same thing is true as you look from left to right, the capital improvements. The, you see six million, six million, ten million. All of those are full. So we can't, we can't put any more money into those. What's left in those is all that we have in the capital improvement. And obviously we've been doing a lot of capital improvement work. Then you see the capital technology reserve. And then the second capital technology reserve, again, first one's full, second one is not. We are expending approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year on technology to continue upgrading. For those who don't know, BOSI's won't even support our Chromebooks after five years. So we have a replacement plan where we're regularly replacing all of those devices. This year we use them to turn over staff computers and we're going to continue down that road, so. And then the last one, Allison, if you want to talk about it.
Yep, we have on the budget vote on coming up, May twentieth. There'll be a proposition for a new capital improvements reserve up to ten million dollars. We have two million dollars that's currently available to put into that reserve. So once that's approved, we'll have one additional capital improvements reserve.
And just, just from a perspective on capital projects, for those that don't know, as a district, we have to come up with twenty percent. That's what we have to pay. So our current project is about sixty million dollars. So, you know, for a project like that, we needed to be able to front twelve million dollars. If you can't front that money and you're going to borrow that money, it's not coming out of reserve, you're paying interest on that money. Our goal is to pay the least we can for everything that we do have to purchase. This right here was something that we prepared for the board. Allison prepares every year to give the board an idea if they go above, or right at the levy limit. This year the board elected to go right at the levy limit and that's what the voters will be voting on. And then this graph right here is a testament to all the work that the board and the business office really have done. Going from one of the most physically stressed districts for a couple of years in all of New York State to a zero is really a testament to all of that work. A big part of that is having reserves. Not having to borrow money. Not when we do borrow money, we're borrowing at a really low rate because of our really good score, credit score. That's something that we want to make sure we continue. And the last one, Tuesday, May twentieth, eight AM to nine PM, right here in the high school ALC. Will be the budget vote. We'll just ask people to come out and vote.
Any questions, board?
Thank you, business office, for all the hard work going into that over the last months.
With that, open up any items for board discussion? Old business, new business? Any public comments?
You can, if you are on the, the first meeting in July, reword meeting, yeah. If that works for everybody, you can do that. It does have to be, it can be tonight, it can be next meeting, whatever you want.
Suppose we can do it tonight if
Absolutely.
And it's July second, correct? Okay, so I'll call for a motion to schedule reword meeting for July second. Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Stained, motion carries. Nobody for public comments, anybody? Public comments? Alright, open up for board member comments. Alright, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. And move from the seconded, all those in favor, please say aye. Post, stained, motion carries, adjourn, thank you.